What's up?
Oh, you just tore it off.
No, I just tore it off so that I can go back to keep in line, keep us in order. All right, it's 10 o'clock, so we can go ahead and get started here with the January 25th, 2022 meeting of the City of Denison Planning and Zoning Commission. Like to confirm that we have a quorum here, so we can go ahead and get started. And so we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Let's go ahead and do the public comment if there's any parts that were for something other than, unless you want to hear them during the item.
Pardon me?
I would like to pull the B item, please. So we'll do the, did you want to do the public comment portion of the agenda?
I think it's probably a good idea.
Right, if, saying for anything other than, than what's on the agenda here today?
Yeah, or for anything that isn't a public hearing item.
Okay. Does anybody, if you come to the podium day and wish to speak, I would like you to state your name and address for the record for us, please. And if you would also limit your comments to three minutes today. And especially, I guess, if you are going to repeat something that somebody else has said, you could say, you know, I echo their sentiment, and, you know, if you have anything else to add, then do so at that time. Are there any, any public comments at the, at the time of each individual public hearing? You'll have your chance to come up and speak on a particular item. Anything else to start with? All right, then we'll go ahead and move over to the consent agenda. Did you have a request, Mary?
Not for the minutes, but for the, I don't know when you want to do the B. It's just a question about the, that plot is, it's one I go by every day, it's got beautiful trees on it, and I just wanted to make a comment that I hope we save some of the trees that are in there. And also a question about the actual way they plotted it. I believe there's a house on one of the lots. I couldn't tell from the map whether the existing house is on the...
Okay, do you want to remove that from the consent agenda and then we can discuss it further?
Right, right.
Okay, so I have a motion to remove item 3B from the consent agenda and to move it for further discussion.
A second, that's fine.
And I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Okay, so on the consent agenda, currently, we just have item 3A then. Any questions, comments on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as presented in item A.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, minutes are approved, all right. So then for item 3B.
Okay, so applicant is requesting to approval of a final plat that reconfigures one lot into six lots. All those lots do meet the requirement for that specific zoning district, which is single-family 7.5, and they all, they all have adequate access to water and sewer pertaining to the trees. I know that the lots are to be developed for residential purposes, I don't, I don't think the applicant has expressed anything pertaining to the trees. I'm not sure if the applicant is here today for Willie Hewler Estates. So I'm not sure how to answer that, but I know each lot is to be developed in a residential manner.
It would just be subject to our tree ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Did you say you had a question about the layout of the lot?
When you look at the, it's very small, but when you look at the final plot there, the, a lot, most of it's pretty straightforward, but the existing house, I'm guessing, is, well, I'm not sure whether it is on, and my old eyes can't even see that's, which number that is, the long narrow one that is running north and south.
On lot six, the one that fronts on Bullock Street?
Right, is that where the existing house is?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, that makes a lot of sense then. Okay, that's really all I needed to know, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions of staff? Any further comments among the commission members? Not all, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the final plat.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion is approved. All right, now will we move to the public hearing section of our agenda today, starting with item 5A.
Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the Howell at 75, number two addition, located at the corner of Crawford Street Road and US Highway 75, case number 2021-183RP. This is the location of this plat. This is currently, I believe, the independent bank site location. The lot is just going to be split into two, two lots. It's currently zoned local retail. And here is that proposed plat with that independent bank being the southern portion and that lot one being this plat to be sold. The applicant is requesting the approval of this plat in order to sell the property. It was mentioned during comments by staff that once there is development to be on this, piece of property, water and sewer will need to be extended, but as of right now, it's just, there's no development that's been mentioned. And I'm present for any questions, and I'm not sure if applicant is here or not.
Any other questions of staff at this point? Is the applicant or anyone on behalf of the applicant here today? All right, is there anyone else to speak in favor or, or not on this item? All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. Any other comments among commission members or questions of staff? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed replat.
Have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? None. Motion is approved. We'll move on to item 5B.
Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the Bylow Wholesale Edition, Lot 1, Block 1, located at 610 South Myrick, case number 2021-182RP. Here is the site, it's located, I think we all know where Bylow is, but this is 610 South Myrick. It's currently zoned light industrial, and the applicant is proposing a replat in order to construct a new building. Public Works is going to need a 10-foot, or at least a 10-foot wide utility easement on the northern portion of the property prior to filing. This plat does not show that easement, so before we file that plat, we'll need to see that utility easement. And I'm present for any questions.
What are the two lots that are being?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
I see portions of, I know that, I know the layout on that is off typically a little bit, but it looks like it's...
It may be three, I may have been incorrect.
Okay, I guess it looks like maybe portions or either that or those are small.
So it's the main lot, and then those two, you're right, those two southern lots.
Okay.
To make it, just to extend that rectangle that's already there.
So just to, just to clarify, then the new building is going to go to the east of the existing building, and the easement is those two pieces that are south? All right, looking at the building, I think the only place they could put a new building would be...
Right here.
To the east. It's an additional building.
The additional, yeah. And then perhaps the easement is why they're wanting those two parcels. I don't know.
The applicant's about to walk in right now.
He can answer any questions.
It doesn't really matter, but it, it just doesn't make sense that a new building's going to go on that little strip.
Right.
It's got to be over here, and the only reason that they would...
So, yeah, it's, I think that the easement, if I'm not mistaken, will be on the northern portion of that property, but towards Fannin, is that correct? I'm sorry, Carrie, hate to throw you under the bus.
So it's for a current water line that's obviously used this on the property, which means the water line is meant to show a flat, and so the water line actually runs from Fannin, so it runs south of Fannin, and then it turns to go west towards Myrick, and so that's the location of the water line easement that's needed for both of those.
Pardon, okay.
That makes sense.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending the final utility easement location.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion is approved. Move on to item 5C.
Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to change the zoning of 0.1377 acres from local retail zoning district to 2F, two-family duplex residential district for a property located at 826 West Crawford, case number 2021-177Z. This is the location of the property, just kind of in the corner of South Skollin and West Crawford, that's Kroger to across the street. And as you can see, there is an existing structure on that piece of property. It is zoned currently local retail, and the surrounding area is zoned that two-family, excuse me, duplex, which is why this was the zoning district that was chosen. And here's a survey of that structure. Just to recap, they're requesting a rezone from local retail to two-family duplex residential zoning district, and as I mentioned, property has been developed in a residential manner with a single-family residence currently on the property. And I am present for any questions, and I believe the applicant is also.
Okay, so under, under the, under the 2F zoning, you can have single-family.
That is correct, I'm sorry, yes, that is an entitled use.
Right.
You can have single family.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions of staff at this point? Okay, would the applicant like to come speak?
My name's Carl Mason, and I'm representing an applicant, Cartagena Spode and Nomi Cartagena, and their desire is to have a rezone, so at some point I'll be able to sell it.
Okay, and would you state your address for the record, too?
I'm sorry, Carl Mason, I'm in 1904 Elmore Road, Memphis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. One, so I'm assuming it's going to stay as single-family?
Yes.
That's your intention. Are there any improvements planned for that structure, do you know?
That, that particular property has been improved on the inside, and they've actually improved the outside as well.
Okay, because we could only, I could only pull up an old picture, and I'm sure it was different.
Yes, the owners, even in construction, he's, he's updated the inside and, and actually cleaned up the outside, too, and make it look a lot better.
Well, and I'm concerned a little bit about parking, because I know there's a parking issue on Crawford in that area, it's one of the more congested areas, there are often five cars every time I go by parked on the street. Is there, would it be possible to have access to that property from the alley?
There is an alley there, and there's an old gate back there, but it's not really pretty accessible. It's pretty overgrown by the fact.
So that hasn't changed.
There's a driveway there, though, right beside of the house.
Mm-hmm.
They might accommodate two parking spots.
So that, that would be my concern, if they chose to use it as a duplex, that there probably would not be enough parking adequate for the duplex, because it's, it's probably two cars there all the time.
That's a good question. Actually, it's really just a single family.
Right.
And that's the way it's been for several years.
Okay.
Since my, the people I'm representing, they're all, so it's really not used as a duplex.
That's good.
It's just a one single, there's actually two front doors, but it's only, they use it as one front door, so it's just a single family.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? Then we'll go ahead and close the public comments section of this, of this item. Any other discussion among commission members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of changing the zoning from, of the subject property from local retail zoning district to 2F, two-family duplex residential zoning district.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion is approved. We will move on to item 5D. And I think for this one, it was tabled a couple of meetings ago, so probably first we want to go ahead and, do I have a motion to remove it, remove it from the table, so we can take action?
So moved.
Have a motion?
A second.
And a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is back on the table, and so item 5D.
Receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 4.1 acres from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to a planned development overlay district for the single-family, for single-family residential development on South Bluebonnet Avenue. Sorry, case number 2021-150PD. Here's an aerial of that subject property with Loy Lake to the west, and obviously to the north as well, and then Bluebonnet just to the, just to the east. Currently zoned, single-family 7.5. And here's a proposed layout, I don't, it might be a little hard for you to see on the screen, I don't believe this is in your agenda packet, and I apologize for that, but this is the proposed layout of the, the development. The development consists of 28 lots. And these are some proposed elevations, just to hit on some highlights of the, the plan development language, the base zoning will be, will fall to the single-family five standards unless it's called out in the PD. The minimum lot dimension is going to be 40 foot wide by 80 feet deep, and a minimum lot area of 4,000 square feet. There's going to be a mix of single car elevations and, or single car garages and two-car garages. These are the single car elevations, proposed elevations, and then also the two-car garage elevations. A minimum dwelling unit floor area of 1,250 square feet, and there are some building materials called out in the development language, cement, fiber siding, brick, stone, or masonry. And there is a, there will be an establishment of an architectural review committee to review all facade elevations prior to the home being permitted by the city. Just to recap, the developers requesting a rezone of approximately 4.1 acres from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to a planned development overlay district for single-family residential development, and the proposed uses of the planned development comply with the comprehensive plan. I'm present for any questions, and the applicant is also here as well.
Okay, any questions of staff? Would the applicant like to go, come forward?
More than Chairman Charles Shearer, 415 West Miami, right here in Denison. Thank you for hearing this this morning. This request, you can use to take this track of properties, it's brought to me about a year ago, I guess, we've been working on, on developing this, uh, line of new owners, with the possibility of doing a little more with this than what we originally, so, so we sat down and put together a, a development, and in the process, which we have made several, several meetings with city, with staff, in order to develop what we hope will become of a model for future development within the city, we wanted to develop something, even though this is not a big, a planned development with, with smaller lots, which we are nearing more towards a, a dune-ester population in this, in this development, not necessarily families, because obviously they have small children for larger lots like Mr. Evans there. But, so that's what our plan was, but we wanted to be very specific with how we did this, because we wanted to go in and create a development that would do several things. First of all, we wanted to be a very, just sort of the image, we wanted to be superior, we wanted to be something Denison's proud of, we want to protect the values of our neighbors within that district, and we wanted to, as I said, create a role model or a, a model for future development within the city. As most of you know, they're serving on this commission, but most of the folks here probably don't know, the state of Texas, and their interest was a few years ago, decided that the city could no longer mandate what structures were built out of, whether it be commercial or residential. Break that down, someone could go into a zoning district, and if they decided to build a house next door to yours with no siding, they could put it up, and the city had no control whatsoever over what they did. So we, we looked at this pretty seriously, how do we control that? How do we create this, this development, this subdivision that we want to create and maintain the integrity that we want to do it? So we're doing that with, with a, a set of very strict D restrictions, and you've seen the, the examples, I have the poppers back up there. You look at the examples of what we presented here, this whole development would be designed in what we call a neoclassical type architecture. We want to be a consistent architecture, we don't want a lot of different hodgepodge things popping up in here. If we mandate this via D restrictions, if you notice, we have certain elements, coach lamps, like we have over the door, the arch over the door, the carriage house garage doors. You notice the corners of these sketches, they're, they're the trim pieces and, and the, the louvered vents, and those, those are all architectural elements that are consistent with this particular style, and we're going to mandate within our D restrictions that each elevation possess a certain number of those elements, so that we can maintain a authentic classical style of architecture to the whole community. So we spent a lot of time going through and developing those, as, as Diane told you, the architectural review committee, which will be, at this point, myself and, and the developers, will control and approve each elevation before it's allowed even go to the city for a permit. We have mandated that each house, the original concept ran shows 28 lots, I will tell you that I don't think we will get 28 lots after the engineering gets, gets to be completed. I think we will probably lose maybe as many as four of those lots along Bluebonnet, which will become our water detention areas, where we can capture the water and then slow it down, so we don't create any flooding. So I think we'll probably be more like 24, maybe 25 lots when it's all said and done. If you'll notice, on the far, on the west side of, of the property, you'll see the two lots in the corner, which are somewhat cul-de-sac lots, those lots, all the way back directly to the side, those lots will have two car garages. The lots in the interior part of the, of the development will have mandatory single car garage. The yards of defense will have sidewalks throughout the community. Everything will be landscaped, we're going to require a tree, I think it was, we agreed on a two-inch caliper, I think, a minimum two-inch caliper in each front yard. Each house will be landscaped. And, I don't think I have any others that we have listed here, that, as we go to the materials, will be some infectious siding requirement. We are going to add, I think, to our D restrictions, a little material by the name of Alura, it's new to marketplace, which is along the same as Hardy, which is the cement siding, but the Alura, we would like to maybe encourage builders to use that, because that's a 50-year warranty on that product, so we'd like to step the warranty on up on, on the siding products. If someone decides to come in there and build a brick home or stone, as long as it can comply with the architectural elements and installs, then we're, we're not opposed to that whatsoever. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
You answered them all already.
Answered them all, please.
Yeah, well, I was...
Some things I would like to mention. I did get a phone call from Doug Doper, who was concerned about the water pressure. I've had city, I had carriers here this morning, but I've had the city go out and visit and testing. They have come back to me and said that the water pressure is good and will handle it, no problems. They argued to go over to, I think, Mr. Booth's house and start kind of working over there, checking some things out to see what may be causing this water pressure, not to be what it should be, but as far as what we have in the overall area, it does, it does meet what's required for this. Also, in my meetings with Mr. Webb and, and Mr. Dean, who are no longer with the city, but when we started Portland Project, we discussed the need for a traffic study. Web said, due to the fact of the size of the development, the fact that we're targeting these towards the residents, that wouldn't be enough trips per day to constitute us doing a traffic study, and that was the thing for development, so we'll add those to the conference here. Any other questions you might have?
No. Thank you for addressing those, and also I do want to commend you on, on the development standards, so that it's not just a, not just a little cookie cutter where every house is going to look the same, and it's just going to be, throw up something cheap so that you can, can sell them.
In the process of what we, what we've accomplished, and we've gone and done the research as far as appraised values and what we, what we expect for these properties, the houses across the back, we anticipate being probably somewhere in there, we're putting up 1,500, 1,600 square feet. Those can carry a price tag of much as 250 to 275, we'll call the, the value. The others, on the front side of the east side of the development, our minimums per foot, I think Diane said 12, 1250, if we put the minimum.
I believe it said 12, 1250.
Yeah, it's 1250. I will tell you that the sketches that you've seen, none of those are, are that size, we're, we're probably, the, the cost of the development, also lots, we're looking at probably more of a 1,300 to 1,600 square foot range as far as house size is concerned. So based on houses that I have recently disclosed, we're looking at somewhere about $168, maybe to $175 a square foot, is what we'll price for them, and all the smaller homes. So we think that the, the property value is good, it will help to maintain the values of, of that entire area when it's all said and done.
So would you predetermine where the house plans are and then sell them that way, or?
No.
Would, would somebody come in, so if I was a...
We can duplicate floor plans, but we can't duplicate elevations.
Okay.
So we only have 20, if we got 24, 25 lots, there should be no reason for us to duplicate elevations, okay? That's just...
But would you build as... But would you build as people buy them?
Uh, we, we can do one of two things. I, I anticipate a lot of these things will take delivery, so I feel the builders are going to be able to accept. Now, there will be probably some people who want to come in and contract a lot and have a house built. In that particular case, that house will be designed for their specific needs, uh, for that particular lot. And it has to be designed, uh, designed in accordance with the deep restrictions and covenants that we have established.
Cool.
Any other questions for Mr. Shearer? Or, uh, you can, if you want to go, go ahead and come forward, and then, and then we can bring Mr. Shearer back to answer any questions. If you would, just remember to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Eddie Self, basically, but I'm the owner of a little bond actually. I'm in the fourth quarter. And I had a long talk with Charlie the other day, and he pretty well explained it. And he's pretty much answered our question, his own water pressure all over. Uh, traffic was another concern, and you put that many houses in that, so I'm sitting here, I thought of a third question. We're downhill, the top of that hill on Bluebonnet is probably 30 before you put the difference. I'm worried about you put all these houses, concrete, right, what you said, that if it rains a lot, it's going to flood, come down to us, and we're on the south side of the town now. I mean, a hole right in, a water right next to that group, he wouldn't have been here today, but he couldn't, he couldn't stop this no more. Traffic, if it is an empty nester, what you sound like it would be, there probably wouldn't be as much in and out, you know? And I, Charlie, I almost, I drew that picture right about it, I drew it almost about down to the back right here. So I'll call Matt and find him. I hope Brad was in the longhouse. We were 14-0, we weren't even spoiled on that year. Other than that, it seems very well planned. I guess my only question would be the drainage. If he said something about flooding it out, you know, I mean, uh.
Sure, yeah. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Self, before?
You're smart, you're smart.
If you think of something else, we can come back, we'll come back to you. Yeah, all right, Charlie, would you, uh, did you hear his question?
Yeah. We have these, these people, we call them people civil engineers, like, we'll be over here. Uh, their responsibility to make sure, and we, we take into consideration the impervious area, we take into consideration that, that falling, you heard me talk about water detention, so that's the whole purpose of that. Now, we do anticipate probably having to remove some of that material from, from the top side up there on the west, so yeah, it is high, and we will have to lower that down. We do anticipate that, that the houses will need to be stair steps, so it's going to probably require some short retaining walls on, on the lots. Uh, again, when I go back to what I said earlier about the price of the lot being, uh, you know, how the price of houses, you know, that's a big, that's a big portion of it. As we do the, the, the painting wall and dirt work and everything, it's necessary to push the prices of development up to the point that's why the houses are going to have to be a little bit bigger. So, yes, that will all be taken into consideration. What we're here today is just to put the zoning in place. Uh, we will have to come back to the city with, uh, with our engineering to be approved for the development of our structure. So that, but that, uh, that concern that Eddie brought up has been, has been talked about with staff. And, uh, so engineering will have to be the ones to come in and tell us what exactly we need to do to keep, to keep that from happening. But that's, that's their job to answer that. Ready to fill it?
How about sewer problem?
Well.
Sewer runs downhill, so we're prepared.
Terry wants the capacity of sewer and Bluebonnet.
So I'll make, hey, any sewer capacity issues, but that's something I look at early engineering as well. And there will be another meeting?
No, there was, we don't have another meeting for, for, for the engineering process, but the city will take our engineer drawings, say, or do those engineers with our engineers at the city, and they will approve it. So it has to meet all of the requirements set forth by City of Denton and the Eastern Practice Act and other people before they're allowed to start the struggling on it. But there won't be another meeting happening today on that.
Sir, you say that this, that the water in the sewer flows downhill, and you're going to level that upper part?
We've done, we will, it will be leveled some.
Well, because we just here several years ago had a French drain put in our backyard because of the runoff of that hill.
Are you on the west side of the property?
We're number eight.
Okay, so it's running back and forth.
We're back in that corner.
So that's, that's, that's our objective, is to take that forward to the east. We'll bring that down, pull that dirt towards the east and take it down so that we drain down towards Bluebonnet where our water detention would be, and then that will slow it down, which will fix here, but I don't want, I don't want to get into all this. But we're going to, what we're going to try to do in essence with our engineering is to keep that water from going downhill back into Bluebonnet. We're going to take that hill off.
Because it's, it's flooding.
It has overwhelmed that.
Backyard, our backyard, our backyard. I thought my house and my pool was going to be washed away.
I feel pretty confident that once the development is done, your water problem will stop.
Well, and you said something about a retaining wall around your.
Well, we're, we're the, we're properties going downhill like this, the lots have to be leveled.
Right.
Okay, so you level, you're paying, level, retain, level, retain. So that's, we stair step the houses down, okay? And then the water's going to give. That's the natural problem with the problem.
Right. Well, I don't want his house flooded.
That's, that's, as I said, that is, uh, and, and water runoff and water drainage, storm water is what we call it.
Right.
Is dictated by the federal government, not the city, not the state, but by the federal government. And there's a lot of, of federal laws that we have to comply with, that engineers have to comply with, and it's all about keeping you from flooding. And we have problems in Denton, there's no doubt about it, but our storm water is not the greatest in the world here. So, uh, yeah, we've had, we have a lot of areas in town that it can run in three drops and it's flooding. And so, but now with, with laws that are in place, that's why we have to go to the extremes that we have to go to with engineering and the elements to keep, to keep that from happening.
Okay. Well, that hill behind our, our own there is anywhere from eight, I hate it, 12 foot up, I say. That will be leveled.
But what we're going to have to do, we'll have to take some of it, we'll have to come out, we hold off. We, we, we already engineered or have developed, so that's going to have to happen. And so we'll have to remove part of it, and then we can pull part of it back to the east to set down the lots and rid of that.
Any other questions right now, or anything else to add right now, Charlie? Ma'am, would you don't state your name and address just for the record for us, please?
Bill.
Karen Gillespie, 2520 Stevens with a B, Drive, Denton.
Perfect, thank you.
They've lived in town for a couple of weeks now.
Um, is there anyone else here to speak on this request? I did have, obviously, I did have a letter from the Gillespies, and then there were a couple of other, um, letters of opposition. I think a couple of Mr. Self, who's here, and, um, a couple of them, the Gillespies had a letter, um, as well, but then there were a couple others that are not here. And I think it was basically some of their concerns where the, the, the traffic, the water line, sewer, um, as well as the, the, the drainage. And I believe Mr. Shearer has, has addressed some of those. I will say the good, you know, good thing is the city, city staff is aware, you know, obviously of these, of these concerns, and, and that should address it, you know, with something done. Right now, there's, you know, I would assume if nothing happens, it's probably going to continue to get worse, um, you know, by having the development there where they actually have to have a plan and, and a procedure for, for draining the water and make sure it goes, you know, goes into the, to the storm drains versus just going wherever it naturally flows, which is the case right now. Um, but that should all be addressed with, between engineering and the city departments as well. Any other, anyone else to speak? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Um, any other, any questions or discussions among the commission members?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district for single-family development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion is approved. And I do, I didn't think I added this earlier, but so the items today, um, besides Platts, will go to the city council meeting on?
February 7th.
February 7th, okay. So, February 7th council meeting, um, is when it will go before the council at that point, so. And then, so we will move on then to item 5E.
Receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of the initial zoning of approximately 3.5 acres to planned development zoning district and rezoning of approximately 3.899 acres from light industrial and agriculture zoning district to planned development zoning district for a total of approximately 7.399 acres located on FM 131, Denton, Texas, property IDs 230504, 378985, and 230505, case number 2021-152Z. Okay. The purpose of this planned development is for the construction of a, an electric substation for Encore. The initial zoning, uh, for this property, uh, is for the back portion, that property ID 378985, that is currently outside the city limits. The applicant has submitted a voluntary annexation petition to bring that 3.5 acres into the city limits for their development. The rezoning is for the two parcels to the east of that parcel. Those are currently zoned agriculture and light industrial. So altogether, they're wanting to do a planned development, uh, for this electric substation, and in order to keep, I'm sorry, in order to keep the, um, instead, instead of zoning it to light industrial flat out, they decided to do a planned development for this single use in order to preserve that land in case something in the future where that substation no longer is in operation. It's not likely, but just in case it is, somebody would have to come in and rezone it, um, or come before the commission to rezone it to whatever their use would be. This is the proposed concept of that substation. There's not much to it, um, and it's kind of hard to see, but the substation is towards the back of the property. And, uh, just to recap, I know it's a little toothsome, but the initial zoning, uh, for this is going to be for that property that is going before the council for voluntary annexation. That's going to be 378985. And then the rezone is for the properties of 230504 and 230505 from agriculture to light industrial, uh, from agriculture and light industrial to planned development. Sorry, lots of words. I know it's a lot. I'm here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here, um, so if there's any confusion, please just let me clarify for you.
Would you address the, the screening part of it?
I believe it's called out in their standards. They are sitting pretty far back off of the road, and they can only do so much screening because it is a substation.
So it looks like there's.
So it's going, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess there's, it'll be, it'll be a chain link fence with, with the three strand barbed wire, um, on all sides that don't face, so basically the other sides except for the side facing 131.
Right.
And then, there, but there would be screening on the, the north and south side of landscaping trees that's required. And then, uh, it looks like, I guess, on the side facing 131, precast, says precast, uh, concrete screen wall or enhanced landscaping.
Right. I don't want to speak to it, but I think there's only so much landscaping they can do for that substation. Um, they might be able, the applicant is here, and they might be able to answer a little bit better to that, but with it being a substation, I imagine there can't be a whole lot of stuff around it.
Any other questions of staff at this point? Would the applicant like to come speak?
Hi, guys, thanks for having me. My name is Seth Jackson, I'm a site specialist with Encore, uh, this is 777 Main World Book Services, so. Um, yeah, I'm here as a, the applicant for Encore. We also have Travis here with, have the, the parent civil firm working with us and helping our site plan together. But, um, I'm here to ask certain questions you may have for this, for this property.
Would you be able to add anything, just, I guess, on the, on the screening part of it?
Yeah, so, um, as Diane, I mentioned, there, we are limited to what type of landscape we can have, just because obviously trees and wire, like, wire don't exist, but, um, as I said, we try to have a strategy to place them where we can on the lot, um, in, in areas that we can to help mitigate the, once they, actually, sure, help mitigate the, um, just the screening effect, but there are certain areas and certain species that we're not able to put near our locations. And the, um, I think it mentions that we need a, uh, the base for the screen wall facing the high voltage, uh, 131 front edge is just kind of to give a little more of an enhanced screening for what you can't see when you drive down the road, but it is a pretty ordinary area if you can touch it, you know?
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. I'm just curious, the timing of it, and is, and the involvement of land surrounding that area, what's the impact?
So as far as the timing, we're, we're going as soon as possible. It's the, the reason for, for the station is, um, low growth in the area. Obviously, you guys in town, you know that better than anyone. And, um, so for that reason, we're, we're, like, start as soon as possible. And, uh, I guess what your second question was, the.
The impact of the surrounding, not knowing exactly what kind of facility you're putting in there, new pipes necessary, or?
So, um, as far as the utilities, we don't, we don't require any of the water sewer, anything like that. The reason for the location is because the transmission line that runs along the backside of the property, um, whenever we site a substation, we, you have to locate them near the transmission line because they actually, they take the, uh, high voltage from the transmission line and they step it down so it's usable to residents and retail properties. So, but as far as extending the utility, no, we, we don't require any.
Can you be able to tap into what's already existing pretty much?
I don't think they, they use any, they don't use the water, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? If not, I'll go ahead and close the, uh, public comment portion of this, uh, of this hearing. Any other discussion among the commission members? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of initially zoning the approximately 3.5 acres of planned development zoning district and the rezoning at approximately 3.899 acres to planned development zoning district.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion is approved. Any staff updates?
Greg? I don't have anything.
No, I don't have anything at this time.
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, all right. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. We are adjourned.